Revenue has pretty much stayed the same in the negative category. There were some adjustments that actually, the tax amnesty proposal that you just approved, and some other adjustments where hopefully, where the expectation would bring that revenue shortfall down. However, due to some of the lack of receipts and license permit fees and fines, we're roughly at the seventy-seven million. I think quite simply, as we look forward, as I look forward to next year, the city is going to be downsizing, quite frankly. And I believe it is very important for us to acknowledge and start taking action to minimize our payroll costs now. The sooner we do that, the easier it will be as far as transition into next year. And hopefully, that we will minimize the number of layoffs that we may be facing.
The report continues with the chief legislative analyst Jerry Miller, calling for substantial downsizing of the city's forty thousand employees.
We need to downsize. I think there's no question about it. If, you know, just simple math, if you're looking at a four hundred and thirty to four hundred and fifty million dollar budget gap for next year, that represents four thousand eight hundred positions. That's thirty-five percent of the city workforce, non-public safety workforce. Clearly, that's not feasible. But the majority of our expenses and the majority of our problems are going to be payroll and benefit related. I think as Ray indicated, the billion-dollar potential shortfall in 2011 includes about a half billion dollars in additional pension contributions. So I believe that the only way that we're going to be able to get through this is substantial downsizing. And as you all know, whether it's through voluntary retirements, or layoffs, or attrition, downsizing takes some time. It can't be done immediately. So this is an issue that we need to begin addressing right now.
Saying he wants the public to know what a four hundred million dollar deficit means, District One Councilmember Ed Reyes asks the chief legislative analyst to go through a list of departments that could be affected by personnel cutbacks.
That, but four hundred million dollars is a big number.
Yes.
There are zeros there.
Yes.
When you're talking about thirty-five percent of the workforce, these are critical changes. Are we going to have enough time, given now and the deliberation of our typical budget season, or?
I think one of the things that, from my perspective, and that's sort of bringing this report for you, is to start having those discussions now. I mean, we had the budget balancing process discussion back in December. You know, we came back, you know, in this report, and we threw some things on the table again, like recreation and parks. Yeah, I know we faced some very difficult decisions, you know, next year. So we had the discussion back in December on some reductions in the current year, where we've laid some things out in this report. And I'm sorry to say, the wrecking parks discussion again, and the animal services. I don't take these recommendations lightly. We, I, truthfully, I don't see hope next year. And I think it'd be more helpful for us as far as transitioning from this year to next year, to start taking actions to reduce our costs in the current year.
So, half of us just got elected, right?
Congratulations.
First day, right. Now, the reason why I bring that up, is that it's going to be our challenge to engage our constituency, to let them know what is going to happen. And we should at least provide a preview. Scenarios that say, four hundred million dollars means this. You put out a very important, or at least our CLA, thirty-five percent of our workforce will have to be eliminated to address that four hundred million dollar gap. And that's non-public safety personnel?
That's correct. And certainly, that's a big piece of this as well. You have to decide, you know, if seventy percent of the general fund costs are for police and fire, are you, the remaining thirty percent, are you going to take that out on civilian departments, meaning wrecking parks, libraries?
Well, let's go through the list. That means planning gets eliminated, recreation parks gets eliminated, Department of Aging gets eliminated.
You're exactly right. I think we had a list of-
Help me out, because I want the public to know what this means.
You're right. There's twenty departments. I can start from A to, what, AP?
Just give us a preview.
Aging, aging, building and safety, CAO. You can, city attorney, disability.
City attorney, disability. Now, these are the same departments that also are in charge of creating revenue and maintaining revenue.
That's correct.
And they should be gone if we're going to meet the four hundred million dollar deficit. I just want everyone to understand what that means. Yes, we just got elected, but now they chopped off the legs from the city. We did. And as a community, we need to understand the impact of that figure. Thirty-five percent of the workforce, the city of L.A. is gone. That's what's before us.
We won't solve this today. That's from Council President Eric Garcetti, who asks to hear the worst-case scenario.
This is a really, 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 really important day. It may be arguably the most important day that you've served on the city council. And I don't say that lightly, because when we look at the moment that we're at, this is, we all acknowledge the toughest moment in our fiscal history as council members, and certainly for a generation or more in the city. And the gravity of the situation, which I know the Budget and Finance Committee has been tackling, we have been watching Rome begin to burn, and we're finally stopping the fiddling, and we're going to start to do the fixing. We have to do some very serious work, colleagues. And as Mr. Smith said, and to reiterate a couple of his points, we're going to be the bearers of a lot of bad news. Now, we have good news, it's a contrast to the state. The worst bond rating in America now comes from the state of California of any state. As you know, the city of Los Angeles, though, has one of the highest bond ratings of any big city in America, because we've always done a good job with what we have. But nobody has much this year, because all revenues are down due to the economy. We can't have rosy projections, we can't think about new programs, it is not what we are going to expand, it is how much we are going to cut and how deeply. And if we don't do it now, we will do it later, and we will do it more sloppily, and we will do it deeper if we do not do that right now. I'd like to ask our CLA, because a number of us, we've launched conversations with the mayor's office, and we're having good collaborative meetings there in the ERC, because our employees, we owe, because of their work to us, we owe them the faith of an honest discussion from the beginning about how severe this is. If you could lay out for the council, what is the worst-case scenario, looking forward in these next couple of years? The CAO has projected some, but that you've looked at. And I want to be clear with our employees, we are not putting these forward as any proposals at this point, because our desire is to first go to our employee groups and say, help us solve this problem together. How can we do this? Because I know it is the desire of this council to keep as many people in their jobs, not to add to the layoffs, not to add to the shortfalls in our economy, not to compound the home foreclosures and all the other suffering that goes on in tough economic times. But lay out for us, what would this be the equivalent of? We heard the mayor states the equivalent of forty-eight hundred of our forty thousand, roughly, employees. But if we talked about a combination of layoffs and furloughs, and cutting our equipment purchases in half, and looking at our COLAs, and many of these things are difficult to do, because we've already negotiated them, but just to help the council wrap their head and the public wrap their head around the math, walk us through some of the scenarios of what this would mean to balance the budget this year. And assuming the stock market doesn't recover during this year, where we're going to be out for our pensions?
Certainly. Again, to be clear, I'm not making any recommendations here, because what I'm going to say is not going to be very pleasant. But looking at perhaps, as I indicated, forty-eight hundred positions is certainly not going to happen. I do not believe that that's feasible. But looking at a scenario of eliminating twenty-five hundred positions, either through retirements or layoffs, every non-public safety employee in the city taking one furlough day a month, cutting our equipment in half, and eliminating COLAs for non-public, eliminating the COLAs, we would still have a hundred million dollar deficit.
And now the matter is before council as amended, and that would be including seventeen A, and also the reports back, including Ms. Gruel's request to have a special presentation on pensions.
And the first week of April.
Yes.
That matters before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That matters, pastors. Thank you.
And joining us now by phone is Budget and Finance Chairman Bernard Parks. Councilmember Parks, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you very much for the invitation.
We just saw some of the updated financial report for the city. It looks bad for this year, even worse for next year, as Los Angeles just broke.
Well, we're not broke, but we're going to have to be very smart in how we use our money. The thing that's unusual for the next couple of years, is that normally, when we were in some form of budget distress, it was because our expenditures got out of hand. The last couple of years, what's unique is our revenue sources are dropping dramatically, and we're also spending more than our allocation. So both of those are coming together is what puts us in this bind.
Certainly, we'll get through this, because frankly, there's no other choice, but city services will be greatly impacted. The big question on a lot of people's minds, will we see a reduction in public safety areas such as police and fire service?
Well, I think that's going to be a major policy decision for the council. But what we're confronted with very, very clearly, is that we have budget shortfalls, we have a budget that's going to be at just barely over four billion dollars. We have some choices. As we said at the council the other day, you can actually cut twenty-one departments out of the city's government, just in total, and not cover the entire deficit. And so I would suspect that you're going to have to go across the board and cut a variety of things, because the most expensive things we have are public safety, but they currently account for seventy percent of our budget. So if we cut thirty, forty, thirty to forty percent of every other department other than public safety, then we will end up with them being accounting for well over eighty-plus percent of the city's budget. But all of those services that the public expects, such as streets, and sidewalks, and trees, and alleys, those issues will be cut down to the point that many of them may not be able to provide much of any service. So I think that's a policy decision. Do you maintain the police and fire at the current level and not have any cuts whatsoever? And everything else gets decimated? Do you close libraries? Do you cut hours on parks and recreation? Do you have lack of staff when these parks are used? And I think what many people have expressed a concern about, is that the very time that we're in a financial crisis, where many people are going to be without funds to go to the movies or do a lot of recreational things, if the last thing you should be doing is cutting the free services within the city, such as wrecking park, libraries, and other things where they have access to. So the major policy decision for the council will be, how do you go about prioritizing the minimal dollars we have, and at the same time, be sensitive to what you may have to cut as far as laying off of personnel and people losing their job? Are people willing to cut forty-some-hundred positions out of other departments to ensure that the police and fire are untouched? Those are all very critical policy decisions that we're going to have to grapple with after April the twentieth, when we receive the mayor's budget.
Because of that seventy percent number that you keep referring to every time we talk about this, the other thirty percent perhaps having to absorb at least most of the cuts, you just mentioned maintenance services, streets, trees, things like that. What caught my ear frankly, Councilman, was taking the city attorney's office, for example, and completely eliminating it as a possibility. That seems unimaginable.
Well, the thing is, this is that you could make some cuts to the point that they, in the sense of them handling the several, the tens of thousands of criminal cases, and particularly the litigation against the city, you could harm them immeasurably if their resources are cut dramatically. So I think these are the things we have to look at, is that no one service should take the brunt of the cuts, but it's going to require cooperation in which you set the priorities. And I don't believe, honestly, from my perspective, that you can have a budget in the situation that we're in today, that can say nothing's on the table. The other issue is, it seems not in our interest to move forward on a budget for this coming year, that we know we can't maintain the following year. So if you go forward and hire more police, more fire, more city attorneys, whatever you hire next year, and if you can't maintain it in year ten, eleven, then what have you really done as it relates to providing service to community? I think this is a clear indication that the budget's going to have to reduce to the size of the revenue that we can be assured of, and we're going to have to hold people accountable to spend within their limits, and only when the funds begin to increase, to where you can start looking for adding services. And even if we get a windfall, like people are talking about selling some of our infrastructure parking lots, even with that, if that windfall should come, you can ill afford to buy personnel with them, because you don't have that same windfall coming the following year. So you're going to have to look at how windfall money is being used, should it be spent on? Part of the general fund should be increased, should you put it in places where you have one-time expenses, so when the service is over, you no longer have an obligation? These are all the things that have to come up. And again, you know, with the pensions alone, pension, medical costs, and workers' comp, are three areas that are going well beyond the city's ability to maintain. We have a workforce of thirty-six thousand people, and with the pension obligations, workers' comp, and medical, we cannot sustain the current system of pensions, medical plans, and workers' comp.
We just heard you and your colleagues talk about a combination of layoffs and early retirements. The number twenty-five hundred was thrown around, you just mentioned forty-hundred as a possibility. Have we even started that process yet?
Well, beginning to look at it, beginning to see what the numbers are, because depending on where the priorities are, if you decide that the police and fire will go untouched, you're talking about forty-eight hundred cuts in other parts of the city. If you're also balancing where you're able to negotiate with the unions and reduce their, eliminate the COLAs that they are expecting next couple of years, if you're able to get some solo days, and people are going to take off voluntarily, or forced volunteer, you're saving funds on the salary account. But in order for people that are eligible to retire to make a decision to retire, they're going to have to make a decision that going in retirement is better than what might be their expectation while staying on. So if they're, they're going to have to work less hours and get less money, if their pension contribution is increased, those things make it to the point where people may decide it's better to go to the pension, because the pension has an annual cost of living. The other issue, you're going to have to have a balance, because merely just having people on the payroll working less does not cut your pension obligation, your workers' comp, or your medical, because they may work less hours, but you're still obligated for the, the hundred percent of those three funds. So you're going to have to have a combination of a variety of things. And if people voluntarily retire because they're eligible, that is assistance, but you certainly cannot begin to rehire their replacement, or else you're just creating a larger void in the budget.
I also want to point out, as you very well know, COLAs, the cost of living adjustment, and in many cases, that has been negotiated. What other levers do you have? Do you have other strategies to help make ends meet and get us back on track?
Well, I think the issue is, we're going to, again, you know, I think realistically, and many people have said that the city has been very generous to its employees, and we hope that in the negotiation with employee organizations, that they understand that, and that they're able to come to grips with what's going on in the rural economy, and come to some decisions that allows the city to maybe get some give-backs, so that they can balance the budget, but also save some jobs. Because, you know, we've seen some cities where people have held, unions have held strong and said, irrespective of the loss of job, we won't give up any benefits. Well, you can't keep the benefits in the same number of employees. So we'd hope that that's going to be one of the primary issues of negotiating with the employee unions to understand that the city is in dire straits, there is no debate as to the financial situation. And I think the other issue we have to be cognizant of, is that even though our revenues are running short, we also are contemplating the lack of resources, or at least the late resources from the state government and the federal government. So depending on what they do with their budgets could continue to impact the city's budget. So we're looking at all of these issues, we could make very good decisions about the funds we have available, how we're going to allocate them, but if all of a sudden, the state government decides not to send us our gas tax money, or they decide not to send us our block grant money, or other kinds of grant monies, then we're going to end up making, having to make other decisions and move funds around. The city of L.A. has somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-five to eighty projects that are depending on the state bond money that has been voted on by the public. Prop forty, prop K, prop twelve, prop one B. If those funds aren't forthcoming, or if they're held and delayed over a period of time, those projects go wanting. And depending on where those projects are in their closure, the city's going to have to make decisions on how they bring funds from other places to finish projects that are practically completed.
You're practically out of money, we're out of time. District eight councilmember and chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, Bernard Parks, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you very much, Jack.
The review of the mayor's budget by the Budget and Finance Committee will take place over a number of days, and will be carried live right here on LA City View, Channel thirty-five. Consult your viewer guide for air times. LA City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel thirty-five, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline, the two-one-three-four-seven-three-three-nine-seven-eight. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety, on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at ten a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at ten a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday, at nine-thirty a.m. and six-thirty p.m. On Sunday, at nine-thirty a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending March sixth, two thousand nine. On behalf of Cameron Keys and everyone here at Channel thirty-five, I'm Jack Boak-Joy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Hi, I'm Antwanet Bisaval, Director of Finance for the City of Los Angeles Office of Finance. We are excited about a few changes we have made for the upcoming year in regards to filing the business taxes in the city. If you're looking to e-file, here's how.
I never understand why people wait until the last minute and then panic about filing their business tax renewal. Really, it's not that hard. Go to www.lacity.org/finance. Enter your account number and zip code found on the renewal form. Confirm that the account information is correct. Enter your tax measures such as gross receipts. Proceed, and the form will automatically calculate the tax if due. Verify that the information is correct. Print a copy of the renewal confirmation screen. Louis, it's a no-brainer. I saw it right through it. Anyone got a cracker?
I'm Antwanet Bisaval. Thank you so much for watching. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, we want to make this process simple and efficient.
LA City View, Channel thirty-five. Your city, your channel.
Your city, your channel.
Yes, Mr. Lavange.
Is anyone from the Department of Cultural Affairs in the chambers yet? Okay, okay, good, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Smith is here. We now have achieved a quorum. Welcome to City Hall, the Los Angeles Council Chambers. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council, and today is Wednesday, March the eleventh, two thousand nine. The council meets three times per week, on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and the meetings are open to the public. And for those who can't make it to City Hall, the meetings are televised via cable on channel thirty-five, or can be viewed by visiting our website at www.lacity.org, or on council phone at two one three six two one CITY. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grohan, Wees, Alabange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, West, Weston, Zion, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you very much. We need an approval of the minutes. Next item?
Yes, and would you like to have a mover and second on that?
Mr. Alarcon moves, Mr. Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Cardenas moves, Mr. Rosenthal seconds.
Madam President, before beginning the agenda, there are several items that have been requested to be continued. There's a request on item number nineteen to continue that matter to March twenty-fifth.
So that'll be without objection, if you want to open the roll on that?
No, the unanimous vote is fine.
All right, fine.
Item number forty-two, one of the closed session items, there's a request to continue that matter to March twenty-fifth as well.
That'll be without objection.
And also on item number forty-eight, a request to continue that matter to March twentieth.
And again, without objection.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings, items one, two, five, and six are confirmation of building and safety liens, and I believe there are no cards on those items.
Okay, so we can open the roll on that? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next order of business?
Items three and four are also building and safety liens, however, the department has advised that those matters may be received and filed inasmuch as the liens have been paid, and those can be done without objection as well.
Members, are there any specials? No specials then, open the roll on those items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next order of business?
Items seven through ten are street lighting district items, and a recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearings and ordinances to be presented on April first.
That's without objection.
Items eleven and twelve are street vacations, and I don't believe there are any cards on those.
All right, without, I'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next order?
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items thirteen through twenty-four. Item number thirteen is a confirmation of a commissioner, do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes. Mr. Smith?
I just want to make an announcement. I know sometimes some of our guests' questions are being, excuse me, our meetings starting late, just for the record, I'm a, the city's representative on the LAFCO Commission, we're in executive session, and that's why I couldn't be here on time, so I apologize.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
And Madam President, that would leave before council items fourteen through twenty-four, and I believe there is an amendment in the process on item number twenty, do you wish to call that special?
Yes. Members, are there any specials? Mr. Lavange?
Sixteen, seventeen, and twenty-four. Sixteen, seventeen, and twenty-four.
And Mr. Alarcon, can you repeat your? You got it? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Parks? Just like to hold eighteen until we get the committee report, and then special on twenty-two.
The committee report has been submitted on eighteen.
Okay. We haven't seen it so far.
So the committee report's been submitted, you still want to call eighteen special, Mr. Parks?
I haven't seen it.
Okay, he hasn't seen it. Okay, so we'll wait till it goes around. All right. Open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes. And Madam President, just for the record, the ordinances on those will be over to March twentieth.
All right. Any other items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items twenty-five through thirty-seven, ten votes are required for consideration.
And members, any specials? Specials? All right, open the roll on those items, oh, Mr. Cardenas.
Twenty-seven.
Mr., okay. Any other specials, members?
And Madam President, you have cards on items twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and thirty-three.
Okay, then you can open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Next items are the closed session items, do you wish to hold those on the desk? That's thirty-eight.
Does anyone need to call those items special? These are the closed session items. Okay, and if not, we can just go ahead and proceed to vote on those items, if you would, please open the roll.
Madam President, for the record, the settlement amount should be read into the record on those. The first item-
Okay, go ahead.
It is item number thirty-eight, and that settlement in the case of Cortez versus the city, and that's in the amount of two hundred forty thousand dollars.
Is that right? Mr. City Attorney?
If I could just jump in, perhaps, Madam President, you should ask the council members that if they want to discuss any of these closed session items in closed session, then those will be called special, otherwise, the amounts will be read into the record and voted on.
So again, I'd like to make a request, any of the council members who want to discuss the amount of the settlement in these respective items in closed session, I would ask them to indicate their interest in doing that now, otherwise, the clerk will go ahead, proceed to read the amounts, settlement amounts into the public record. Are there any concern or objection about that? So Madam Clerk, if you would, proceed.
The first item, Madam President, is item number thirty-eight, and that's in the settlement of Cortez versus the city, settlement amount is two hundred forty thousand dollars.
Open the roll on each one. Okay, open the roll on that, please, close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes. Next item is item number thirty-nine, and that settlement in the case of Truro McQuarling, and that's one million five hundred thousand.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Next item's item number forty, and that's Southwest Pipeline, and that settlement amount is one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
Open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
All right, ten ayes.
Next item?
Next one is item forty-one, and that's settlement Grossman versus the city, and that's one hundred seventy-five thousand.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes. And Madam President, I believe there is a card on one of the closed session items, item forty-three.
Okay.
And do you wish to call that one special and hold that on the desk for the card?
We can call that special and hold it on the desk.
And that would conclude the closed sessions. Do you wish to recess the regular meeting and take up the special meeting?
All right, the special meeting is now recessed, would you please call the roll for the special meeting?
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grohan, Wees, Alabange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, West, Weston, Zion, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
First item?
The items on this agenda are all items for which public hearings have not been held, items forty-four through forty-seven, and I believe there are cards on forty-four and forty-seven.
That is correct, yes.
Do you wish to call those two special and then-
Yes.
And then take up forty-five and forty-six? And I'm sorry, there's a card on forty-six. I'm sorry, Mr. Parks, did you call an item special?
Forty-four.
Forty-four is special then too, yes.
And that would only leave forty-five.
Open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll. And then tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes. And Madam President, do you wish to take up those items at this time, or do you wish to hold those on the desk and recess the special meeting and go back to the regular meeting?
We need to recess the special meeting and go back to the regular meeting.
Okay, that would take council back to the items on the continuation agenda, item number forty-eight was continued already, and item number forty-nine, I believe, two substitute motions are in the process on those two, do you wish to call those special?
Are they ready to go, or are they in process?
I believe they're still in process.
Okay, well, why don't we hold that until they're ready to go? What's the next item?
Take council back to public comment.
Why don't we wait on public comment and go through the items that we can go through right now?
Okay, do you wish to take up the commissioner at this time, that's item number thirteen?
Yes, that'll be fine. Yes, Mr. Cardenas?
For purpose of introduction?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas is going to make a brief introduction, and then we'll go to item thirteen.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like the kids from, and the parents and teachers from Vena Elementary School to please stand and be recognized. Thank you for coming. Normally, the Vena kids go to fly to Sacramento to meet with the governors and senators and assembly members in the state capitol, but this year, they're going to do it right, they're coming to the local government facility, here in City Hall, where the real work gets done, and we just want to welcome the children, the parents, and the educators from Vena Elementary School on their government field trip. These are the fourth graders from Vena Elementary. Madam President, did you want to be recognized? Or are you on thirteen? Okay.
Mr. Alarcon?
I just want to say hi to the kids at Vena. My daughter graduated from Vena, so I spent a lot of time at Vena Elementary in the classrooms, where I was the parent advisory council president, and so, thank you for coming and joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Now, back to our first item, item thirteen.
And that's confirmation of Mr. Kim to the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners.
Is Mr. Kim present? Mr. Kim? Come on up to the front. And who's, Mr. Alarcon?
Madam President, members, I had the opportunity to interview Mr. Kim in the Education and Neighborhood Council meeting, and let me, let me say this about Mr. Kim, he's one of these super intelligent, articulate folks who, notwithstanding their overall capability, they would rather than make a lot of money, serve the community. He has done so in several iterations, I guess he hails out of the Bay Area north, and demonstrated his community leadership, first of all, at the Korean Community Center of the East Bay, and by the way, he is not related, I believe, to Mr. Bang Wong Kim.
Right.
And although he also hails from a Korean Community Center here in LA, in any case, he was, he graduated from Berkeley, worked at the Community Center, became essentially an expert in nonprofit management, and was a consultant at the Center for Nonprofit Management up there, also serving as, currently as the co-director of the Advancement Project, and the director of the Healthy City Project here in LA, where he works with the health system at the county. So I find- system at the county. So I find him particularly well-suited because of his commitment to the community, more than anything else, to the neighborhood council system, and also he obviously serves, can additionally serve the special community of the Korean community, which is one of the fastest-growing communities in Los Angeles. But he's a generalist. I think he will be an asset to us in all ways. I have said many times that I'm not sure about the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, but, hold on a second. But, but I believe that with talent like this, we might be able to put some focus on it and, and create some real productive activity out of that group. It's, it's a difficult challenge to manage our neighborhood council system. I believe the budget is going to impose additional challenges. So with that, it's my pleasure to recommend John Kim and ask for an eye vote on his confirmation. With that, Mr. Kim, would you like to make some comments?
And, Mr. Kim, after you speak, we do have one speaker who wants to speak on your nomination. His name is Mr. Clyde Williams.
Okay. Well, good morning, everyone. Councilmember Alarcon, thank you so much for the generous introduction. I also want to thank all of the council for taking the time to consider this appointment. I find it a very special honor to be called up to serve the city in this particular way. My family came from South Korea in seventy-one and found a home here in Los Angeles, and it's sort of, this city has given so much to us. I recently had a daughter also here in the city, and so I find it to be a real special opportunity for me to try and marshal my skills and talents for the benefit of the city. So I thank you again for this, this confirmation.
Dr. Williams?
My name is Clyde Williams, four-one-one-five Barrett Road, El Sereno, CD fourteen. Experience. The neighborhood councils are all volunteer. The neighborhood councils have a lot of people in them that have a lot of experience with the neighborhood councils. In CD, in LA thirty-two Neighborhood Council, it's probably one of the youngest neighborhood councils in the city. We don't need more on-the-job training. My concern, as expressed in the committee meeting, is Mr. Kim's experience with our neighborhood council system, and we're concerned that more and more on-the-job training is being done in Dunn and on the board. Thank you.
Speaker on the side is Mr. Dogg, Mr. Zuma-Dogg.
Yes, this issue's very dear to my heart. We're talking about neighborhood commissioners. I believe that's part of the neighborhood council system, and also we're talking about commissioner appointments, and no offense to the current commissioner appointment, but one of the things, when I was running for mayor, I was concerned that Villarosa uses commissioner appointments like these as political paybacks, patronage favors, maybe, hey, drop out of this race over here, or, you know, hey, if you're a good person over here, we'll give you a commissioner appointment. So I would like all commissioner appointments to be vetted as far as what their experience is, because we're robbed of experience when that happens. Secondly, I'm concerned that the neighborhood council system has turned into nothing but an extension of a corrupt, shady city hall. Villarosa City Council. Neighborhood Council is supposed to be independent of council, an independent voice of the community. However, if you have Villarosa infiltrating the neighborhood councils, it is not independent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lavange is our first speaker on this.
Mr. Kim, thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
And thank the mayor for the appointment. I see your family is here as well, which I'm very proud of you. You had a day named after you in Oakland, California.
That's right.
Tell me about that. I think that's interesting.
Well, I did quite a bit of work as a community organizer up in Oakland, working with youth and particularly dealing with multiracial tensions on the campuses, and between that work and my work at the Korean Community Center, I guess the city deemed it appropriate to, to name a day after me.
Well, that's a great honor, and we're honored to have you serve. All I would say is, if I could use what a, and I could say to our neighborhood people who are down here speaking to themselves, who criticize us for not listening, Hollywood cinematographers put their thumbs together and say this is the picture they want. Neighborhoods should say what the picture they want is. That's what empowerment is. They sometimes get caught up in bureaucracy.
Right.
We deal with bureaucracy three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. Neighborhood councils should express what they want for their neighborhood, and in the concept of what a cinematographer would do as they frame a picture, I ask them to help frame their neighborhood so they can bring back what glory they want to their neighborhood for the good of all people. Your background is outstanding, and I thank you for your service. My office looks forward to working with you. I also will say there will be a severe budget crisis.
Right.
And, and budgets of all departments, including our own, are called on, so we'd hope the same question would be asked of our neighborhood councils as well. We'd rather not close parks and libraries in the event of the challenge that faces us ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lavange. Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Madam President and, and members. I too rise to thank you for your commitment to the community and to congratulate the mayor on what appears to be a very wise choice. And for the last couple of years, we've been hearing a lot about one community organizer in particular, and I think it laid the foundation for this individual to become the president of the United States of America. So I'm not saying that you're going to be the president, but what I am saying is, it's a good place to start as a community organizer, and it's good to see you here with your family, and I look forward to voting yes on your appointment.
Thank you much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. There's no further speakers in the queue, so let's open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I just want to let the, those who are here in the audience know that we will be taking public comment at the end of today's session, because we do not want to lose quorum, and as a courtesy, I want to let you know that now, and even if we do lose quorum, I'll, I will still hear, go through all the cards. Okay, next item?
And next item, Madam President, is item number sixteen, and that was called special by Councilmember Lavange.
Mr. Lavange?
Thank you very much, members. Is anyone here for the department on this here? Because I know this is a big issue that we had in your interest, Ms. Perry, on this issue. Is anybody here for the department? Just give us a brief report, please. Thank you, Sid.
Good morning, council members. My name is Sid Makarag. I'm the director of real estate for the Department of Recreation and Parks. We were made aware of the motion, and at this moment, we are currently investigating the opportunities that we have in the old bank district. Just for your information, right now, we are in escrow on one property on Spring Street, Fifth and Spring, and we hope to close escrow by the first week in April.
Great. And City Hall Lawn, is that a park, the First Street Park, or how do you term it? You maintain it?
It is a park. It's called City Hall South, City Hall Park South.
And is there any other parks? I see the new police administration building, there's a lot of setback in area there. Is that public space as well, or do you review that at all?
It was my understanding that there was some talk about making that public space, although we have not been involved in any of that.
Right, I think you should look at it. Anyway, Ms. Perry, I'm just trying to join with you in any effort you can to get more public space, public park space in the central core of the city. Sid, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The matter's now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Next item is item number seventeen, and that was called special by Councilmember Lavange.
Mr. Lavange, Ms. Perry has her button pushed. Shall we--
Yeah, I'm going to ask Ms. Perry to speak first. She's chair of the committee, but I want to support Ms. Perry greatly, as we all should, in this tremendous opportunity to bring a value to the African-American Firefighters Museum.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and this item is regarding funding for two major art projects at the African-American Firefighter Museum, and a letter of support for this project has been submitted at the committee level. My staff has met with Cultural Affairs. The proposed project is a picture of Mr. Firefighter Arnett Hartsfield, one of the early African-American firefighters at Fire Station Fourteen. The sculpture would be done by world-renowned artist Lane. The second part of this proposed art project is a mural series telling the history of African-American firefighters in Los Angeles by Michael Massenberg and Teresa Oliver. The cost for both projects is estimated to be one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars and will increase and raise the profile of the historic Central Avenue corridor. My motion has suggested that we use the Arts Development Fee Trust Fund money for the project. These Cultural Affairs would also like to use the Arts Fee Trust Fund, but it's had some issue with the city attorney. The fund is under the purview of the Cultural Affairs Department. Since it was placed under the purview of the city attorney, since then, no projects have received funding from the Arts Trust Fund. Pursuant to advice from the city attorney, each project needs to be looked at on a case-by-case basis and needs to be on-site where the fees are developed. Well, this is a fire station, so we're not developing or generating any fees from a fire station, although this is on one of the Central Avenue redevelopment corridors with proximity of several projects at Twentieth and Central, Adamson Central, Thirty-third and Central, and of course, our neighborhood City Hall at Forty-third and Central. So there is a great deal of redevelopment activity taking place on Central Avenue, thus generating tax increment. So I would hope that we, as a body, could support this project.
Mr. Lavange?
Thank you very much. I just again want to stand and support the solution that Ms. Perry has stated, and also recognize all who've been involved here. Is anyone from Cultural Affairs need to say anything here at all?
Anyone from Cultural Affairs--
Ms. Wilson, you need to say anything if you fill out a card at all? Okay.
She says hello, Mr. Lavange.
We're good to go.
All right. The matter's now before us. Open the roll and close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That matter passes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Mr. President, next item is eighteen. That was called special by Councilmember Parks, and he has advised that he's had his answers.
So we have no questions on that matter, Mr. Parks? Okay, let's call that matter. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Next item's item twenty, and that was called special for an amendment, and that has been distributed to the council members. If no one else has called it special, it can be voted on at this time.
Okay. It's now before us with the amendment. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Rolling right along. Next item, please.
Next item's item twenty-two, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we have the CRE staff up? I just had some questions about their process of selecting these seventy-four consultants. Let me just ask quickly. I want to, first of all, I commend you on putting the process together where we'd have these people online at the time we need them. I just needed some background to find out, when we went through the process, do we have a breakdown as to the location of these businesses, whether, how many of them are minority or female-owned? Are they all in the city outside? Those are the kind of things I was wondering, by council districts, where they might be located?
Yes, we did. I'm sorry.
Good morning. Thank, we do have a summary of the outreach, and--
Yes, the outreach in the newspaper. I was just wondering where these companies came from that were selected. Are they all in the city?
Yes. We have a percentage that I could give you. I could share with you the information sheet. She made a copy for you, and I could give you the figures. Okay. In summary, there was fifty-three firms that was located in LA County, twenty-one firms that were outside of LA County, total of the seventy-four firms that we are recommending. The minority percentage that we have for the seventy-four firms being recommended, we have twenty-one percent WBE, ten percent MBE, and sixty-nine percent minority.
Okay. Could you, for the public, could you explain those letters that you--
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. WBE is Woman Business Enterprise. MBE is Minority Business Enterprise. M, minority is, minority is sixty-nine percent.
So we have sixty-nine percent are minority-owned?
Correct.
Okay. I appreciate that, and this is something that's very helpful. Could we get offline where these might be located by, by council district? We don't have it at this meeting, but if I could get that, I'd appreciate it--
By council district, we can't do that.
--so we'd know who the companies are, where they're located, but to have sixty-nine percent of them as minority-owned companies, I think is a great step forward than some of the things we had in the past, but that's the only thing that's lacking, is where they might be located.
We can provide that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. There's no further council members in the queue, so would you please open the roll on that? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Next item's item twenty-four, and that was called special by Councilmember Lavange.
Mr. Lavange? Mr. Lavange? Mr. Lavange? All right, turn on his mic over there.
Here for the Department of Transportation. Hold this until the Department of Transportation comes, either today or tomorrow or the next day. Please hold it on the desk. Thank you.
All right, you want to hold it on the desk for now, then?
Continue it for two weeks.
All right, we'll continue that for two weeks without objection.
And that would be March twenty-fifth.
All right, thank you. Next item?
Next item's item number twenty-five, and that was called special for cards.
All right, our, I have a blank card here. I have a blank card with no name. Did someone fill out a card for item twenty-five and didn't sign their name?
Arnold Sachs, item twenty-five. Just curious to know why this bid is being done on a quarterly basis when all the other bids are being done on a yearly basis. It just seems a total amendment or a total verbal amendment to the policy. Any particular reason why this one is done quarterly as opposed to yearly and all other bids? You have two other bids on the, on the agenda, twenties, thirty and thirty-one, and doesn't seem to be anything done quarterly for those. Doesn't seem to be anything done with any of the other bids that have come before City Council. This is a new policy for this bid? Is it just for this bid only?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your answers.
No further speakers in the queue. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
And, Madam President, I'm sorry, just off for the record on that one, the order goes over to March twentieth.
Thank you very much.
And next item's item twenty-six, and that was called special for cards.
Let's see, Mr. Zuma-Dogg and Ms. Isis are speakers on item twenty-six. If you would come forward, Mr. Zuma-Dogg and Ms. Isis.
Yes, the views on my YouTube have gone up on this REAP. I have a YouTube about it, and I'd like to explain the situation briefly. REAP is a program to help crack down on slum landlords, you might call them, that do not do necessary improvements, so it's a good program at its face. However, it's being used in a corrupt fashion that I say is racketeering, and that a federal lawsuit is being filed, and I feel that there's several hundred lawsuits waiting to be filed, and insiders have told me it's one of the biggest fears of the city. Here's what's happening. The city needs money. They go, hey, mom and pop landlord that is housing low-income people, we, you got to make these improvements, aesthetic improvements, just to make it look nicer, because we say so. Well, the banks aren't allowing these types of improvements. So then the city goes, well, now you're bad landlords, and then they slap the REAP on you, and then the people can't deal with this anymore that own the buildings, and so then they have to sell them to the city council's favorite developer, flip them to million-dollar condos, and then the low-income renters that are being housed in these properties end up getting kicked out of the streets. So although some of the-- So although some of the council members say I'm wacky, I've got something that other people don't have: truth and facts. And there's a movement out there. By the time this comes, you'd think Zuma Dogg wakes up every day and says, "You know what? I want to talk about rent escrow accounting. It's like my favorite topic in the world." No, it's because I'm getting hammered by people who are saying they're being affected by this, and the city pretends like they care about property owners. They pretend they care about low-income renters, but behind the scenes, it's a vindictive meat-grinding City Hall. They're just pushing everybody into the meat grinder by making it too hard for the property owners to be able to comply, and then they have to sell. The city gets their way, and then the people get kicked out, and you're not doing anything to accommodate the people that you're kicking out. There's no emergency shelter. There's no affordable housing. There's no anything. And so the city does this all the time. They crack down without providing solutions. I call it a cowardly, vindictive, Maritonia Luzarosa.
Ms. Isis?
Good morning. I'm Isis, Director of Justice League for Benevolence.org, referring to rent escrow account program, aka REAP. I and residents who are here local in downtown Los Angeles especially, and more specifically rather, we demand and ask for accountability. Thus, the accountability of you, the LA City Council, and CRA for bringing in such a scum lord at the Alexandria Apartments at 501 South Spring Street. We are still waiting for you to hold them to compliance. Act now.
Thank you very much. There are no speakers in the queue on this item. Would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Next item is 27, and that was called special for cards.
Mr. Zuma Dogg.
Yes, very important. First of all, the hat and glasses have to go back on now that the election's over. I'm getting recognized in public way too much, and for as much as people think I like the attention, I need anonymity. Now, this is something I'd like to commend Tony Cardenas on, because when I did run for mayor, a lot of people came to me with issues that are very uncomfortable and people don't like to talk about. One of them is the gang injunction rules, and we need-- What happens is, it's very easy to get on the gang injunction list. Now, we all want to get cracked down on gang crime, but again, it's a very easy list to get on, but mainly, once you're on it, it's very, very tough to get off. And so you have kids that are scared even to walk to the libraries after school because maybe their clothes are too baggy and maybe they just look a certain way, and there's a lot of harassment and, you know. So basically, yes, I commend the effort. We do need to remove the good kids off of the gang injunction list so they can move on with their lives, and it's something that's been very important, brought to my attention. It doesn't mean soft on crime. It means pro-youth who deserve it.
Thank you. There are no speakers in the queue on this item, so please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And a reminder that all items will go forth with today, and we will lose a quorum at 12 noon. We'll take public comment at the end of the meeting. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, is item 33, and that was called special for cards.
Mr. Zuma Dogg and Ms. Isis.
You know, once again--
Stop the clock. Mr. Dogg, you have one minute left for today.
And then I got the special meeting, right? Okay, one minute for today, then two minutes for the special meeting, Deanne's aware of. What I'd like to say, have you heard about the Scorpion and the Frog? Zuma Dogg is the Frog. City Council is the Scorpion. The minute I come here and commend them for scaling back on special event fee waivers and saying that, gee, they're really doing something about it, well, no, no, it's all coming back again. I got an email from some of the works for the city that says, "Don't say my name, I'll get in big trouble, but take a look at this and take a look at that." And again, we're in an extreme budget crisis. You're talking about firing people, cutting services citywide, and you know the economic crisis that we're in. So I want you to take these special event fees very-- I want you to really consider these extremely carefully. This is no fun and games right now in the city of Los Angeles, and I say that this is being abused. It's not a business fiscal stimulus package. It's not money for your cronies and people that you're trying to pay back for favors. It's not for front-end-loaded management contacts. It must be open to the public community benefit, and make sure that's what it is.
Ms. Isis?
Hello, viewers of Channel 39, 35, excuse me. Hello, I'm Isis, Director of Justice League for Benevolence.org, regarding special events. Regarding here the Way of the Cross on April 10, regarding the Motion Perry Rosenthal Eighth Annual Festival, the Easter Celebration, the Temple, Nyeheim Annual Purim, LAPD Deputy Chief vacation or something or other, lower, such and such. Okay, in the past, I've spoken to you about the homeless missions and the food banks. Again, please implement a food drive, can and food drive on all these special events, and that the homeless missions, we are in dire need of food. Please act on this ASAP, and do not disregard this request. Any further?
All right. There are no speakers in the queue, so Madam Clerk, if you please open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Next item, Madam President, in the closed session section, that one of those items had a card, item 43, and there is an amendment to the amount. It should be $126,462.33.
Okay. Item, there, item 43. I am not able to locate a card under 43. Did anyone from the public want to speak on item 43? And did they fill out a card that is not in the box? Okay, there's no one coming forward.
And Madam President, just for the record, the case name on that is Rudy Gonzalez versus City of LA. And again, the amount is $126,462.33.
Are there any speakers? There's no speakers in the queue on this item, so open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Next item, Madam President, item 49 was being held on the desk for substitute motions, and a substitute motion has been distributed on 49 A and B, and those can be voted on.
All right.
I'm ready for 27 whenever you--
Okay. Wave at me. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you very much. I think Mr. Cardenas has a request. Mr. Cardenas?
I think they were holding item 27 on the desk.
27 was already voted on. It needs to be reconsidered.
Yeah. If we can reconsider 27, please.
Do you need to have it reconsidered? I'm sorry, Mr. Cardenas?
Reconsider 27, please.
Okay. A motion for reconsideration for Mr. Cardenas to reopen. Please open the roll on that. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right. Mr. Cardenas, that motion has been reconsidered.
Thank you very much. I'd like to represent, and it's from the city attorney's office, to come forward.
Normally, we would dialogue on this a little bit more in detail, but we're going to have to be brief because we're in danger of losing a quorum--
Okay.
--in a little while. So could you give us a brief synopsis of what the status is of the gang injunction removal process and the fact of why it has to be out of your office?
Yes, sir. And we'll be very brief, Madam Chair. Bruce Riordan, the Director of Anti-Gang Operations for the City Attorney of Los Angeles, and I'm flanked by Arturo Martinez and Anne Tremblay on my left, who are two of the chief deputies of the Gang Division in the LA City Attorney's Office. The update is this: As we've reported to the Ad-Hoc Committee on Gang Violence and Youth Development on several regular appearances, the petition process is now-- The removal petition process for gang injunctions is now underway with the great support of the Ad-Hoc Committee and the City Council, as well as the mayor's office. In LAPD, we have 20 applicants under review, and the process is evolving as we get applications. The next stage of the process will be increasing the applicant pool, and that we intend to do, working with the City Council, and as the council member mentioned, taking the lead on it, because it is ultimately the city attorney's final decision on the process that is what determines whether someone is on or off of the enforcement roles of gang injunctions. We hope to do three things, and I'll just give the headlines. Further community outreach by way of getting the message out to the public through our website and working with the City Council and the ad hoc on that. Further training. We've already conducted since last year, 100 and over 150 trainings, and the metaphor that we use is that it's like the Golden Gate Bridge in San Francisco. You start-- Training must be conducted continuously. You start at one end, and when you get to the other end of the paint job, you have to start again and retrain everyone to make sure that the process is working. And finally, we want to reach out to our partners in the city family, as well as in the intervention and prevention fields, so that they can help us sponsor the appropriate applicants for the gang injunction removal process. The general theory is this, and I'll be very brief. If there are, as law enforcement estimates, some 10,000 potential individuals who are within the safety zones and affiliated with gangs, then we are very certain that among that 10,000, there are going to be perhaps several thousand who could be good applicants for this process. And the question is going to be to target those people, to get the information to those people, and to help them through the process, and that will be something that will evolve over the next year and beyond.
And beyond the city family, are we working with other partners in the community that have interactions with these individuals or potential individuals, such as the Public Defenders Office, et cetera? Are you working with other entities outside the city?
Yes, we are, sir. And in fact, those connections, which almost didn't exist two years ago, when we were, for example, with the Public Defenders, we had relationships with them as adversaries, naturally, on all of our cases. But through the Ad-Hoc Committee on Gang Violence and Youth Development, we have found some common ground with our partners in the county, such as the Public Defenders, who we just met with yesterday, as well as have had prior meetings with, so that we can begin to educate them on the process and, at the same time, be educated by them. Because, you know, let's face it, Public Defenders interact with the accused and ultimately the convicted, in many cases, very substantially, and they have a lot to offer about-- They can educate prosecutors, as well as prosecutors being able to educate them.
So this is-- When it comes to the gang injunction removal process, has anybody been removed in the process, and do we have more than one application so far beyond that one in the pipeline?
Yes. The final summary for the time being, and this we hope to have changed substantially over the next six months, for example, we have 20 applications now. We have one individual removed. We have another 19 applications. Of those 20 applications, for example, part of the process of learning has been 11 of those applications were people with pending cases. That is not ideal, because the judicial process-- The petition is not a substitute for the judicial process. It's a complement to. So the cases have to be resolved before the petition process can operate, but that has been the great benefit of the Ad-Hoc Committee and the City Council connecting us with the Public Defenders, so that we can work with them to find applicants who do not have pending cases, or, in the case where people do have pending cases, they can resolve those cases and then proceed forward for services that they may need, such as monitoring, education, jobs, before they get to the application process.
Okay. Can you briefly tell me, just so that some people watching don't start throwing their drink at the TV, thinking that this is some liberal process, that we're just going to take these individuals and gang members and just let them off the hook for no reason? Has anybody submitted an application where it was either denied, or they were told, "Look, it's just not going to work. Come back some other day when you get your act together"? I mean, have any of them been denied or paused or stopped?
Yes, sir. And sorry to interrupt you--
More than one?
Yes. In fact, the bulk of the applications have been either denied and then redirect-- We try and redirect the individual towards services, and that's something that the Ad-Hoc Committee has been helping us with, and the various council members that represent districts that are most heavily impacted by gang violence have been helping us with, including the chair, including Councilmember Alacon, Han, Reyes. I could go on and on, and I don't want to leave anyone out in my brevity.
You got to give him some input over the--
But also, several of the applications have been incomplete or have required additional information, and they've been returned. So of the 20 applications, only one has been approved. The other 19 have either been denied or are being reviewed-- I'm sorry-- Have been returned to the applicant for further information. In some cases, the applicant was not even in a safety zone or was not even subject to a gang injunction, so--
But even that's a good clarification, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
It's still an education, and the beauty of this, we think, is that because it's underway, it's something that can evolve and adapt and be refined over time, rather than just be talked about.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and also, I'd like to point out to my colleagues, as far as we're aware, from our awareness, this is the first formal gang injunction removal process in the country.
Correct.
So this is something that is not easy to do. It's something that's not accepted by and large when it comes to all the people who are in charge of public safety and making sure our streets are safe or what have you. But what's more important, I think that we've done the right thing, because this is a responsible process. It's not an easy process. It's a process that isn't just for everybody, but the bottom line is it's available to the individuals who feel that they have a right to challenge the fact that they are on a gang injunction list, or it's been years and years now, they are now doing different things, they've no longer been involved in activity or what have you that may have gotten them on that injunction list, and therefore, they have the right to actually be removed, if they can prove that they should be removed.
Correct, sir, and I may echo that in two things. One, your mention of public safety also reminded me that Councilmember Weiss and his Public Safety Committee have contributed-- Their staff members have also made contributions to this process over the last several months, and I want to include the Public Safety Committee, as well as the Ad-Hoc Committee on Gang Violence and Youth Development. And then underline what you just said. One of the keys to this-- The key component, to follow up your comments, is the burden is on the individual to prove that they are no longer affiliated or active with any gang. And that process, we found, is like every other application. Some people don't want to take that burden up at all. They find it to be too heavy. But those who do, we think the process will be rewarding, no matter what the result is, because even they'll create, as we've mentioned many times, they'll begin to create the positive paper trail that can counterbalance the negative paper trail that so many people have, which have dug a hole for themselves. This is a process where they can begin to climb out of that hole.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to add to--
I mean, Mr. Martinez could talk at great length about all the things we're doing to get the information out to the public, but we don't want to belabor that, and Ms. Tremblay has been the key person on the training. I don't want to prevent them from speaking, but I also know that the chair is very busy, so I don't want to interfere with your quorum.
Okay. Well, actually, on that note, I have introduced them-- I will be introducing a motion today that will outline for the city, as far as the city family goes, the different ways in which we can and should be complimenting your office and getting the awareness out there, so we increase the number of people who are aware of it, so that they can choose whether or not they're going to submit an application to be removed from the gang injunction list. Also, before we note and file this report, I'd like to also instruct the city attorney and the Community Development Department and the CLA to report back relative to placing the petition at each of the WorkSource locations throughout the city. Again, another way in which we can get the word out to that population, so that they're aware that we are serious, we welcome them if they want to afford themselves the opportunity to show us that they should no longer be on the gang injunction list.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Weiss is our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say to Mr. Cardenas, I really appreciate and admire the work you've done on this issue for the last several years, and I want to thank you for taking the time to sit down with me, Mr. Cardenas, and for really educating me and opening my eyes to so many different aspects of this issue that I was not aware of until you sat and talked with me. And Ms. Han has played a leading role here as well, but you in particular, Mr. Cardenas, deserve a lot of credit for what the city is doing right now, and this folks at the table, Ms. Tremblay, Mr. Martinez, Mr. Riordan, what you're doing, it really is innovative, and it really is pathbreaking, and it really is charting a new course in this nation, and putting together your ideas and the ideas that Mr. Cardenas and his committee have generated. generated, what you're really talking about is, when it comes to either gang injunctions or, as you were just discussing with me a few moments ago, misdemeanor prosecutions, you all believe in criminal law, I believe in criminal law, you've put people in prison for a living, so have I. But you need not be merely only prescriptive when you are drafting gang injunctions or sentences for individuals who are convicted of crimes. You can be prescriptive. You can try to point people in other directions, give people other opportunities in their lives. And by doing that, you and Mr. Cardenas are really recognizing that suppression is not the only answer. It's not the only viable answer. And it's an extraordinary thing here in 2009, this city, while it has a very, very, very strong suppression and law enforcement component to its anti-gang strategy, as it should, that is universally not considered to be the only prong of the strategy. And you all have forged that sea change together, and it's just very, very impressive, and I just wanted to acknowledge it.
And obviously, and I, oh, thank you, Councilmember. I'd say that has been at the direction of our city attorney and the Chief of our Criminal Division as well, and they have to equally share in that. The direction that we're going has been the direction they have set, and I am an executor with my two colleagues.
Thank you very much. No further speakers in the queue. So, Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll on that item? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next order of business?
Madam President, would you like to recess the regular meeting and go back into the special meeting?
Before we do, I have a note that item number 38 should be reconsidered because a card had been submitted on that. So before we do that, why don't we, if someone can make a motion to reconsider item 38? Done without objection. Will you open the roll on 38 for reconsideration? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right. The card was filled out by Mr. Arnold Sacks. Mr. Sacks, if you would please come forward to speak on item 38?
Yes, good morning, Arnold Sacks. Thank you very much. Item 38, in particular, all the closed sessions as one. Again, accounting for the accounting of the amount of money that the city of L.A. continually spends on these legal settlements with outside counsel? When is a procedure going to be finally addressed that will help to eliminate the amount of money, although it's probably never happened because it's all political, but it would be nice if you went through the motions, at least, of eliminating all the money that's doled out for outside representation while the city goes through these mindless legal settlements. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. We can open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Madam President, would you like to recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting to take up those items that had cards?
Yes, please do.
Okay. The first item that had cards was item number 44.
All right. We have two speaker cards on that, again, Arnold Sacks and Zuma Dog.
Yes, thank you. Item 44 pertains to some budgetary discussions. In all the time so far that you've been poring over this budget and the deficit that the city is involved in, I've yet to hear anybody mention contract renegotiation. For the latest contract that was signed a few years, was it a year and a half ago? According to the CEO, that contract had a provision that if the city's deficit of budget entered into a deficit, it could be renegotiated. At what point will you take up the renegotiations with the unions that had their contract awarded a year ago, November? And additionally, haven't heard anything about any salary cuts, any elimination of any of the perks, any withdrawal of staff, cars, anything like that? Why is the public the first to get the burden? If you want to be part of the problem, enjoy some of our pain. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon?
Pardon me?
Oh, Zuma, I'm sorry, Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes. Oh, we only get one minute? Okay, first of all, I'd like to say this about the budget. First thing, I'd like to say, I brought attention about Dr. Demming's 14-point methods for management of quality and productivity. We must address the immeasurable waste that is robbing the taxpayers. If City Hall were your home and you were trying to heat it, we'd have all the windows open. You got to turn up the heat, it costs more money, it costs more energy, and it's totally inefficient. So that's the first thing that must be addressed. And I'd like to thank President Barack Obama today, who finally echoed the words of Zuma Dog. Yes, today Obama said, "We must address the waste, abuse, and fraud." He said it in a different order, but let's face it, people, I've been talking about fraud, waste, and abuse, all in the media, all through the media this election. I think it finally, yes, I have taken full credit for Barack Obama. He spoke endlessly for thousands of hours and never said it till I did. So listen to Barack Obama, address the fraud, waste, and abuse. And I'm here to say there will be citywide cuts across the board. Let's get to it, people.
Mr. Alakon?
Yeah, if we could have the CEO step forward. I don't have a problem with this item in terms of supporting it, but I did want to get some clarification on how this relates to the overall shortfall in the budget. So the first question I have is, to what extent does this diminish services? If you could hold my time, please?
Sure. Actually, where we left off with the mid-year report when we discussed, we had a remaining shortfall of roughly about $33 million, just a little bit over $33 million. This report addresses basically another 19.5. We are doing a source of funds swap for the Vine Street, which is 16, and then we're looking at pulling some money out of the GCP Special Fund Subduty reimbursement account, and then we have a piece for GSD. Most of this stuff, we believe, basically it's mail services, that's just the service that they provide for departments. As far as service impact, we believe it's actually very, very minimal, if not anything.
Okay. My second question has to do with whether or not these will impact our shortfall next year, or whether they're just one-time savings?
At this point, a lot of these things are actually just one-time solutions addressed this year, this problem. Certainly, some of the things that've been discussed with GSD, we're going to look at that, whether any of that will roll over into next year.
Okay. You don't have any idea at this point how much is what?
We will certainly, we're looking at the mail services and utilities and the field equipment, things of that sort. But as you can see in the report, it's minimal. It's, you know, half a million dollars at this point.
Now, MICLA is a fund that creates debt. How much, so in effect, we're going to have an additional cost next year on our MICLA debt service? So I wanted to know, how much additional debt are we going to pick up, or in terms of servicing the debt, how much interest are we going to pay next year?
For the Vine Street, basically, we're looking at our MICLA CP program, which is roughly about 2% as far as what we're paying. It all depends on actually when we go into construction, because we actually haven't reached that point yet. That's anticipated about August or so. So much of it depends on what the timing is of that. If the project goes forward as planned, then we'll have some minimal debt service added to the next year.
Okay. So, all in all, will these actions increase our shortage next year or decrease it?
I think if you look at it as a whole, it's probably about the same.
It's about the same because of the debt service? Okay. Okay. So I just want my colleagues to be aware, about $19 million to save this year to fill the $33 million shortfall, I think is a good thing, and so I do support it. I just wanted to get clarification. I was hoping that you would say it was all going to be saved next year as well, so we're down to $381 million in shortfall. But that not being the case, it points to how critical it is that we find real infrastructural, and I'm not talking about construction projects, I'm talking about staffing, infrastructural cuts next year. And the sooner we deal with that reality, the fewer cuts we'll have to experience next year. So, but I do support this, and I hope all of my colleagues will support Chairman Parks on this.
Mr. Alakon, are you done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, I'll give as much time as you want, but you sound like you were finished speaking. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ray, I appreciate getting this report so quickly. I think we asked you for that last week, but we've now reduced that $35 million by a little over 19. Now, one of the things we want to make sure that council members do where that money was coming from so that there's no misunderstanding, but would you give us some overview of, between now and June 30th, of where you think either our expenditures or the shortfall of revenue, will that $17 million grow that we still are going to be looking for, or will it reduce? Or what is our best guess on that?
Well, at this point, where we stand now, we have a remaining hole of about $14 million or so. And as we requested in your committee earlier this week, that we wanted to basically have a standing item and actually report back on additional reductions for this year so we can close the remaining 14 gap, at a minimum, at a minimum. I think the questioning from your committee and yourself, certainly we're concerned about the revenue numbers. We have brought things down, many of our economy-sensitive revenues by about 3%, but certainly there is the potential, the real potential, that we could see further reduction in some of our revenue sources, and I think we need to be prepared to deal with those.
Particularly, could you comment on that? There was an article yesterday about the reduction in property tax, which appears to be more significant than we originally projected.
Yes. And now, that projection had to do with next fiscal year. Just on the current fiscal year, we actually saw the 8%, almost 8% in our assessed value grow. And thus far, property tax receipts have been very, very encouraging. Certainly, once we get our second payment this year, we hope that it will be on track, will be as expected. The, I think the concern that we have has to do with the collection rate at this point, whether that decreases. Certainly, every 1% is roughly about $5 million or so, 5 to 10 million. So I think this year, we're in solid ground there. However, next year, as you read, the county assessor is looking at a 1% decline. Our forecast for next year actually does take that into account. We do show property tax assessment decline, so we're in good, I think, good standing thus far. However, the assessor is going to continue to go through the assessments, and there may be further revisions down the road.
Could you give us any kind of projection of where you think the prospects of the $17 million might be coming from as you shift through the rest of this fiscal year?
We are certainly going to be working with the affected bargaining units to see what additional savings can be generated through the voluntary furlough program. We are looking at some possible savings in ITA, whether we, there are areas in the 3-1-1, whether we can scale back some services. We're also looking at some of the communication services that IT performed over the weekend. Many times, these folks do that on overtime. We like to bring some of these things, actually have folks do that during the week so we don't incur that just an overtime liability. These are some of the areas that we're going to be taking a look at.
And also, could you give us just a projection? If we move on that Vine Street recommendation and eventually put that $16 million into MICLA, what would be the debt service in the length of time on that? And how would it put us in line with our cap on debt?
As far as the actual cap, I mean, our cap is 6%, and we would see a very minimal impact in that increase. You know, maybe, I would say, less than 10 basis points on that. Most of it depends on, you know, we're using CP at this point, but depending on what we do with SPRF on a go-forward basis, we are contemplating using future revenues to actually pay some of that debt service.
Okay. And could you give us just a thumbnail on what the impact of this whole gas tax issue from the state and the fact that, and how does that impact this report and future projects?
In actually a separate report that went to your committee, we were talking about gas tax and some of the decreases in that particular revenue source this year, and how it's affecting projects and possibly some of the street miles, and also some of the potential general fund reimbursement. We did provide some recommendations. At this point, you know, there's a lot unknown still. I mean, we can sort of project what has happened this year and project some further declines in that particular revenue source. It certainly will affect a number of programs, you know, our street miles and so forth. Those, I think, have been placed on hold until we can get some further information, simply because of the Prop 1B piece of it. But I think we have to be prepared both this year and next year that we will either have to take the hit in our general fund reimbursements, or we will have to take the hit in street miles or some projects.
Okay. And then, on addressing this current year, everything that, where do you see a sense of how it impacts 9, 10, as to what some of these mid-course corrections that we're making now?
Certainly, the sooner that we can implement ongoing structural changes, the money we save this year certainly rolls into the future years. My recommendation is, as soon as we can, the sooner we can lay out ongoing reductions, it will just help us in the future years with our cost structure.
And when you use the term "structure," you're talking about longer-term solutions as opposed to?
Exactly. It's not just 8, 9, it's 9, 10, 10, 11, and so forth.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Tom LaBonge?
Thank you very much. Just a couple of things overall there. On any separation from the city at the end, you buy out their vacation time, or buy out their sick time, or buy out their, is that a negotiated gift?
It's not a gift. Basically, your vacation and sick time and employee, when you retire, yes, the city pays that out in lump sum.
Right. Is there any way to look at that, to say, instead of paying cash, to give them time? Because there is some consideration, at least from what I read, so that you don't have to put the cash, I don't know how much cash it is. I remember when you had perfect attendance and thanks for a lot of good reasons, you had good days where you didn't have to take any sick days, you got a check at the end of the year, just like a bonus check, you know? It was $520 or something. I mean, it's a long time ago. This class of employees, we're not, employees were in that sense, that we are not in that circumstance, but is that something to look at? I always thought that's a way, if you gave credit people time as opposed to cash, you could possibly save some money and keep rec centers open. I'm looking at, anything we say, we're keeping rec centers open, we're keeping opportunities for people to engage in the city in a positive way.
Exactly. Actually, we are looking at that. There's been discussion as far as how to handle some of that, you know, the big payouts. Because basically, you know, if you're a longtime employee, certainly you get a much larger payout. That's because of your accumulation.
But if you gave them time?
We are looking at, actually, we're actually going to get an actual study on that, because that's part of a larger picture. I will say, you know, the one thing is you, it's sort of the cost today versus the cost tomorrow.
Right.
Certainly, you give them, you turn that into time, there's a long-term cost to that. So that's what we're looking at, that balance.
And then also, the other thing, too, when you mentioned about the group at ITA that works on Saturdays at time and a half, or whatever the time rate is there, is that very opportunity to look at opportunities for people to work? You know, we want to diversify our workforce. I mean, I love the song that the Beatles had, "Eight Days a Week." You know, "I Love You Eight Days a Week." I think we should work eight days a week if we're a city. Now, not all of us do work eight days a week, but there's a lot of service we could give people if we spread it out. Is every time one works on Saturday, is that a bonus day for them, or does it depend?
Well, it depends on their particular MOU, their agreement, but you see it, it's an overtime.
But let's say if you work at a rec center on a Saturday, is that a bonus day, or is that a straight day, or do you know?
Well, depending on whether, you know, you're full-time or part-time, if you're part-time, most likely, it is not just a regular.
But I think we should look at some of that, because there are going to be severe challenges for us to serve the people. Our main mission in life as council is to serve the people of Los Angeles and represent them well. In doing so, we want to make sure that we do it to the benefit of the people, which is so key in that issue here. The other question I want to ask you, I think in most districts, the parking meters have been changed to $1 an hour. been changed to a dollar an hour. Is that correct? And if so, has our increased revenue taken place from that? And then the next time I see you, could answer the question, because I think there's one thing to look at there, which I'm, okay, we all have something to do with, they haven't been raised in so many years, so we're going to do that there. The last question, Mr. Zine may be able to answer it too. Some of the commercial shopping centers, and I think it was in your district where I read, Mr. Zine, have reduced their hours on the starts and the finish times. Instead of opening at 9, they open at 9:30, instead of closing at 9, they close at 8:30. Have we looked at any savings there to some of our facilities to say, what hours? And we're, it is a dark cloud that is out in the horizon for our future months due to the crisis from a world standpoint, from a national standpoint, from a state and local standpoint. Are we looking at those ways to make sure that if we do adjust hours, we adjust them to what is in the best need of the people, not in the best need of who's working?
And to answer your question, yes, we are, we are looking at that as soon as we move forward, looking at the facilities, the operating hours. We are looking at trying to determine what the best usage for the public is.
Right.
And adjust to those.
Because I saw the Recreation of Parks, I don't want any rec centers closed on weekends if we have to close them due to the crisis. It should be during the week, at the least day of use, and I hope we have that statistical information to go with that as well.
Yeah, and if I may, just, well, I think the question for, as far as actual rollout, that's a question for DOT, but I will say, as far as the parking meter revenue for this year, we had expected roughly about 44 million. Thus far, we anticipate probably closer to 28, 29 million.
Right.
Almost, and we had talked about, in our mid-year, about being down about 14 million or so.
Mr. LaBonge?
Even before the rates, even before the rates have changed, you see the down, even before the rates, the rates have been implemented.
Yeah, but we had anticipated, because of the increased rates and the extended hours, that we would see additional revenue, we just haven't seen as much as we anticipate.
Anticipated, maybe it's not all there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I appreciate Mr. LaBonge's and Mr. Parks' comments. This is a very serious situation, and we waived it from committee so that we could do it in the public forum here as policymakers, as with the public also being part of it. You said we're down to a $17 million shortfall for this present budget?
Yes, with the actions, if you approve these today, we're down to probably about 15 million, 14, 15 million.
Okay, when you mumbled about the ones that you might think about, you mentioned 3-1-1. That, to me, is the lifeline with my constituents, with city services, and I've already found most recently that you can't get through right away, and it is overload. And I know, because I use 3-1-1 as my constituents do, I was calling in about a pothole, that's a dangerous pothole, and couldn't get through for a while. So what were you talking about with 3-1-1? I don't want to cut those services at all, no matter what our budget deficit is.
I think it's looking at the non-peak hours, it's perhaps from midnight to 5:00 AM, things of that sort. I know we're trying to look at where we have some opportunities to sort of shift some staffing, things of that sort. That's why we didn't have definitive recommendations here right now, because we're still trying to sort through some of these things.
Yeah, I met with my personal financial consultant yesterday, again, on the phone, and got some bleak understandings of my situation. I'm a 63-year-old, and I've lost a lot of money in the last six months. The city's lost a lot of money. Everybody's pension plans have lost a lot of money. You keep alluding to the structural deficit, I keep talking about the real elephant in the room. Is there anything between now, which is the 11th of March, and the end of this fiscal year, that we should do in dealing with the structural deficit that you and I know is going to skyrocket to a dramatic amount? What are some of the thoughts we need to think about? This could be the Titanic notion, and we can't just party, there isn't enough lifeboats for all of us. So this has been great, what we've been doing all year long. I think it's been a great process, and it's been very open. What are you suggesting today, the 11th of March, that we should consider as a council, as policymakers going forward, to deal with that structural deficit?
At this point, if I may say, you know, we're certainly looking at the, all of the units, the bargaining units, all of our employee unions. I mean, it's from the coalition to police and fire. There's a lot of dialogue going on right now, as far as how we come to some agreement and some consensus on how to sort of solve the bigger problem. I know a lot of them, at this point, we had the presentation, but in finance, as far as where we will go, I should say, some of the potential to go with our pension and retirement contributions. So as that information gets disseminated and it rolls into these larger discussions, certainly, we are, from our perspective, are very concerned, and we want to sit down with these folks and figure out how we can solve the greater problem.
Okay, and you've also said, and you've been a little clear about this, that maybe we should be thinking of a second tier going forward. What does that mean to the light people listening to this?
I think basically, for the police and fire folks, we have basically five tiers. Whether we went to a new tier in the future, civilian right now, we have basically one plan, and the question is, do we move to a new second plan, what I'll call a second tier for civilians as we go forward.
And the second tier would mean what?
It could be, you know, based on, you know, basically, retirement is based on years of service, based on the one-year average salary, there's government buyback, there's a number of different things that sort of are folded into the plan, and so we'd be looking at some of those options, looking at other agencies across the state and perhaps the country as far as how we might be able to best go forward, to still continue to recruit, but still provide a very safe, insecure pension for folks.
Now, of course, one of our concerns is, I'm a retirement age kind of guy, you know, so I think about it all the time. What about the pension plans and the healthcare plans, especially the healthcare plans which are serious impacting our budget? Any thoughts on what we should be doing about that?
Certainly, we, we're looking at ways, because right now, we pre-fund those for both plans, but we don't really have an employee mechanism to deal with those at this point, so we'll have to take a look at that. The other thing that we'll have to sort of see what the feds are doing, you know, I think there's some talk that's finally coming forward, and we'll have to see how that rolls into the larger picture, and, you know, there's a lot of options, a lot of dialogue, a lot of data collecting, we're having to get, but it's a concern. Healthcare costs have been rising.
Yeah, and I just want my colleagues to know, this is a very serious discussion we're having here, and it isn't ho-hum, and it's going to get more dramatic, obviously, in the months ahead, when we not only look at next year's budget, but how do we deal with the structural deficit as we all personally are dealing with these issues? And I thank you for your leadership and your ability to have shrunk our present deficit and our present budget to, you said around 15 million now?
About 14, 15 million, but thank you, actually, we need your help.
Yeah, yeah, my pleasure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. That matter is now before us. No further speakers on the queue, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is item 46, and that was called special for cards.
Number 46, we have Mr. Arnold Sacks. And Carlos Bregarano.
Yes, good morning, Arnold Sacks. Congratulations for the city council looking into overseeing the El Salvadorian elections. Maybe you could also introduce them to the same policy the city runs, like staggering the elections, so that some districts are having their elections when some amendments are on the ballot, and some districts are having their elections every other two years. Or also, considering the fact that less than 3% of the city of LA came out to vote for this last election, and the mayor considers that a mandate that he got 55% of less than 300, a little over 300,000 votes, you're going to offer advice and oversight to a country's election results so that they turn out to be proper? Isn't that kind of like the two blind men fooling around for an elephant and both describing different parts, only we got one blind person? It's ridiculous.
Thank you, you're, appreciate your comments. Our next speaker, Carlos Bregarano. Carlos, the last name, it's hard to read your writing. You can pronounce it, please.
Baquerano.
All right, there you go, thank you.
Good morning, council president, and I'm president, members of the council, my name is Carlos Baquerano, I'm the executive director of SALF, the Salvadorian American Leadership and Educational Fund, and also president of the Los Angeles and Salvador Sister City Association. I'm here to support the resolution calling for fair elections in El Salvador. As you may know, El Salvador has been, for many years, under war, and since the signing of the PISA course, El Salvador started a process of democratization. As part of that process, this is the third presidential, the fourth presidential election that we are holding in El Salvador. Your support is very crucial in securing that the voters, the right of the voters are respected in El Salvador, and also that the United States and the Obama administration support and work closely with the new president-elect. So I hope that you can join me in supporting that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Matter is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
9 ayes, 1 no.
Okay, that matter passes. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 47, and that was called special for cards.
Number 47, we have Zuma Dog. You done, Mr. Zuma Dog? You exceeded your time, Mr. Zuma Dog. Oh, hold on, hold on. One minute? You got one minute, Zuma Dog.
I already knew that. I already knew that, I already knew that, that's why I'm standing at the podium, y'all. It's a bonus nine minutes of Zuma Dog today on your TV set at the council meeting, here to talk about track maps. And the thing is that I say no to this track map, no more subdivisions. In case you hadn't noticed, we got a hell of a traffic problem in this city, and that's because you keep approving track maps over and over, which is the blueprint for density. And again, the roads aren't getting any wider, and we can't keep up with the services, and the schools are getting way too crowded, the classroom sizes are going to be going up. Did you hear UTLA yesterday? And remember, you can't spell outlaw without UTLA. But back to the track maps, again, too much density, not enough infrastructure, and the most important thing I forgot, I almost forgot the most important thing, the DWP infrastructure is not ready to accommodate this, the transformers, it's going to look like Tropic Thunder, baby. No to this.
Our matter is now before us. I said okeydoke. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that matter passes.
And, Mr. President, that concludes the special meeting, if you wish to adjourn that and go back to the regular.
Yes, let's do that.
Next item on the regular meeting is special one, and that was moved by council member Wesson, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
City attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the city has learned that the state legislature will be voting on SB 93 while council is on recess. Immediate action is required for council to state the city's official position today due to the impending recess. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Thank you. There's no speakers on this matter. The findings are before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, now on the matter, matters before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Matter passes, next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred.
And there's an excuse on the desk, council member Cárdenas requests a excuse Wednesday, March 25th, to arrive at 10:30, that meets council policy.
He is excused.
And, Mr. President, there is public comment on the desk.
Okay, we have public comment coming up next. And Dr. Williams, you're first up.
For those of us that are still here, Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno. Caltrans State Route 710 wants to come under El Sereno. On the 26th of March, 6:00 PM burial action, in the burial action in El Sereno, Caltrans will probably repeat their previous failure of informing the residents of El Sereno as to what's going to happen to them. This is the first step in moving the South Pasadena Meridian Route, the most practical, into the more malleable city of LA and neighborhoods of Northeast LA. Caltrans says that the study is route-neutral, but requires practical and viable routes. There's only three from the standpoint of environmental, engineering, safety, and financials. One is through South Pasadena, one is along the edge of South Pasadena and Alhambra, and one is through El Sereno and Northeast LA. Guess which one everybody wants? Borings and geophysical surveys have been selected by Caltrans without any established goals, objectives, or purposes of this selection or the overall program. One boring was actually listed in the city of Alhambra, whereas ZEMIS and previous documents placed it in El Sereno. Perhaps the LA city has vacated the authority over the Caltrans undeveloped land between Valley and Alhambra. The council member, the council and members Hoizar and Reyes and various city departments need to protect our environment in Northeast LA, the safety and our residents from the tunneling. We will fight any routing through Northeast LA and especially through El Sereno, which only benefits South Pasadena and Alhambra, at the expense of El Sereno Environmental Justice.
Thank you, Dr. Thank you. Chuck Tenon? Chuck Tenon, second call, Chuck Tenon, not here. Zuma Dog?
How much time does he get?
Yes, first of all, to address the issue of the hat and glasses, I have enjoyed taking off the Darth Vader helmet for the mayoral campaign, where I showed a lot of people, you know, I could really sit there and be subdued and wear a suit and tie, but the recognition in the public is getting too much now. I always like to be in the public, not recognized, so, no, don't laugh, man, so, the Spider-Man hat and glasses goes back on. Now, I'd like to congratulate Barack Obama, I think he might be listening to Zuma Dog or heard my Youtubes, because today, and you'll be hearing about it on the news, he's talking about earmarks, he says we have to address the waste, fraud, and abuse. Well, huh, 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 I should have trademarked the fraud, waste, and abuse term, so thank you to Barack Obama for at least jumping on Zuma Dog's bandwagon, whether he heard of it or not, about the fraud, waste, and abuse. Now, also, I'd like to say, UTLA, the teachers' union, how dare you give a protest like that in front of the police and disobey police orders? You're the teachers, you're supposed to set the example for the kids, so I'd like to say, the UTLA are outlaws, and you cannot spell "outlaws" without saying "UTLA." Think about it, put an O and a W at the end, and you got outlaw. Now, regarding Mar Antonio Verigosa, you know, there's a misconception out there in the community, in his own district, that he represents the people of his community, which he does not do. So I'd like to say, mi nombre es Zuma Pero, con palabras muy importantes, con el futuro de California, y Mar Antonio Verigosa es muy peligroso, muy desastroso, muy criminoso, y todo de los malos ojos. And, Donado, donde está el Donado? Es evaporado en el Alay, y, y, donde está el Donado? Antonio Verigosa, vamos con el Donado, and his services y comunidad es screwed now, para no money, no Donado, para la comunidad y por services, y Antonio Verigosa, no governor of California. Palabras muy importantes, para el futuro de California, Antonio Verigosa es muy malo, and, y es, es un malo...
Buenos tardes. Michael Hunt.
Hasta luego. Thank you, city council, gosh, man.
I forgot to mention to him, hasta luego.
That's the backlash that's coming back at you guys, but anyways, I'm here to sponsor the parent, sponsor committee at the convention center. I think that all the people need to get behind it is 4,000 parents right here, and these lovely ladies, the 13th Annual Parents Summit with 4,000 people, let's give them a fee waiver, let's get the paperwork rolling. It's 4,000 parents, I think it's $2 per person, something like that equals out to that. On that note, you know, really get out and sponsor them, and I think that's Mrs. Perry's district, so I know she's... district, so I know she's willing to help us. Thank you, Mrs. Perry. So, Mrs. Perry's gonna send her chief of staff to here to talk to these people, and we're gonna get our fee waivers done and completed, and on agenda for not next week, but the following week, 'cause we're in, I guess we're, we're black for the whole next week, so that's good, but that following Tuesday when we come back, we're gonna have it on the agenda for fee waivers. It's only eighteen thousand dollars. We give away more money than that at any given time, so believe, four thousand parents at the convention center, and Ms. Jan Perry is a speaker there, and our city attorney, our new city attorney, are speaking at that convention. Let's get it done, folks. Give them a break. Four thousand parents, let's make it happen.
Arnold Sacks, followed by Isis. Followed by Wanda Solomon.
Yes, good morning, Arnold Sacks. I'd like to point out, Mr. City Council Attorney, that the public did not have an opportunity to address the item that you read as a special meeting and public comment, another violation of the Brown Act. It wasn't posted, you got the information before the meeting, and it wasn't posted for the public's perusal. Now, upcoming next week will be the MTA board meetings. Part of the MTA's program that they plan to unleash on the city of L.A. and the county is a congestion pricing plan that will include extra service along the Harbor Freeway and the El Monte Busway. Their goal is a three-minute headway during rush hour, so ask them questions. They'll be able to buy the buses through the funding available for this congestion pricing, but, A, define rush hour. Is it one hour? Will it be two hours? Will it be three hours? If your headway is three minutes, is it twenty buses? Is it forty buses? Is it sixty buses? You have funding for the buses. What about the people who drive the buses? Where's that gonna come from? Oh, I know, you're gonna eliminate other lines, so that you can take drivers off of those lines and put them on these buses. And then another question, suppose the bus is operating during rush hour, and it's heading westbound on the El Monte Busway, Freeway, Busway. It gets to downtown, unloads its passengers. There's twenty buses doing that. When they head back to El Monte, will they be carrying passengers? No, 'cause there's not a need. So it'll be cheaper to operate an empty bus for the MTA than it will be to provide service for the public that needs it on routes that they want to eliminate. Another stellar plan brought to you by the leadership of the MTA, which is represented by the city council and the county.
Thank you, Mr. President. Miss Wanda Solomon? Wanda Solomon?
Um, thanks, Councilmember.
Oh, I'm sorry, what happened? Okay, Wanda Solomon, go ahead.
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Good afternoon, council members and council president. First of all, I'd like to say patience is a virtue. I haven't often been able to come on a regular basis, but you will be seeing more of me in the future. I learn a lot just by sitting and listening and watching the implementation of my council members, who I voted for and support. I am a single parent. My name is Wanda Solomon, and I do want to say what a joy it was to see the children in the house this morning. Do we love children? Do we love children? Yes, we do, and I believe that we do. And I am a parent of three children. As a matter of fact, I support the Parents Summit. I've attended the Parents Summit just about every year. Hopefully, this year I can be a speaker concerning parent rights and so forth. But my main subject today is closing the gap on homelessness families, single-parent families. That's one big gap that I would love to see the city council address and really tend to as soon as possible. Also, I've been involved, I heard something about the neighborhood councils. I'm also very active in our neighborhood councils. As a matter of fact, I raised my children right over there on Cadillac and Sherborne Drive in Los Angeles, one of the most violent areas, gang-infested areas in the city, and it still perpetuates us today. So I also want to add that, in the future, I would like more participation with the parents and our council members, regardless of the district, concerning single-parent families. And I urge the council to support single-parent families and their needs. I'm looking forward to addressing these issues, hopefully, at the single-parent conference coming up. And I look just forward to your support, and hopefully, in the future, we can work better together with the city council.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Isis, Isis, you're up.
Hello, I'm Isis Sage, Director of Justice League for Benevolence.org. Fallow Angelinos, on this, on the subject of the scumlord Alexandria partners on Fifth and Spring, and on behalf of the Alexandria apartment residents, who asked our PR organization three years ago to represent them regarding their suffering, I now disclose the following critical details before all public viewers of Channel Thirty-Five. This serves as a safety precaution, alerting all neighborhood citizens, media, and the federal government. Thus, I'm urging all current residents to take note and pass this distressful message on to all. Today, as a matter of principle, I am lifting a Mayor Villengrosa veil of secrecy, thus a closely guarded and factual corrupt secret that Villengrosa and his arrogant, monstrous style administration refused to hold themselves accountable for. Angelinos, fifty-eight million dollars and counting of our hard-earned money via tax-dollar bonds were awarded to Amerland Logan Property Alexandria Partners over a period of too many years, our money given corruptly to this bona fide scumlord. The United States District Court tells the tale of a sheer nightmare at Fifth and Spring Street. The Amerland scumlord, as we speak, is continuing to violate tenants' rights and apartment building safety habitable codes. Thus, the Alexandria apartment is not in housing compliance. Many of the facts are here before you by the infamous lawsuit against Amerland LA City and CRA, splashed by LA Weekly and other local LA downtown publications. The case number CVO seven oh eight two six two discloses the scummy perpetrators. I'll disclose my name. Villengrosa, Council Huesar Cardenas, Perry, CRA, and David Ricitalli. Downtown Neighborhood Council Russell Byrne, Police Chief Bratton, John Regardi of Downtown News, CRA, and State Assemblyman John A. Perez, previous CRA member. Stay tuned for more details.
Mr. Anthony? Mr. Anthony?
Good morning, City Council. Good morning, LA viewer. Listen up. Just because you see fifteen council members sitting here doing nothing or pretending that they care about you, this is still your house, our house, the people's house. Yes, oh, hold on a second here. Hold on. Did any of you see, or did any of you know that there were over one thousand protesting rallies this past weekend across the nation? Did you see any of them? Few, if any, were shown on TV. Do you know why? They don't want you to see the power of the middle class. Did you see the LA USD teachers with their protesting rally? They too have had enough of the incompetence. You see, the middle class has always demanded better quality of life with equal rights for everyone. The last eight years, there has been a huge force pushing for a blackout of demonstrations, protests, and rallies. So why don't you see these events? The blackout of TV and print media on these events gives most of us the idea, no one's fighting on our behalf. We feel isolated. The last four years, there's been a more forceful push for this blackout by actually arresting American citizens, constituents of every community, to stop this behavior. When our elected officials, our public servants, don't do as the people ask, we demanded in masses with huge rallies and protests until the public servants did the people's will. Unfortunately, the mayor and fifteen council members have subscribed to this blackout, have been the enablers to it, of it. One huge glaring example is when they allowed public access TV to be blacked out, January first oh nine this year. They all claimed they tried to prevent it, just like other issues, they tried to prevent, the people's values were not upheld. Thank you.
Linda Donis?
Yeah. Necesito, por favor, que me ayude alguien. Gracias. Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Linda Donis. Lamentablemente soy aquí otra vez.
Now, we need the interpreter. Mr. Soundman?
I need an interpreter.
Can we get the mic on the interpreter, please?
Keep doing it. Okay.
Is it working now?
Two more.
Hello. Good morning, my name is Linda Donis. Estoy aquí, de verdad no es mi interés estarlos molestando tanto a ustedes. I am here, but in reality, I am not interested to be here bothering you. Lamentablemente lo tengo que hacer. Unfortunately, I have to do it. Y les voy a decir por qué. And I am going to tell you why. Ayer fue un día cansado para nosotros. Yesterday was a very exhausting day for us. Tratamos de dialogar con muchas personas aquí. We tried to dialogue with a lot of people here. Porque queremos el apoyo. We want the support. Para que no nos cobren esta cantidad para usar el centro de convenciones. We don't want your, we don't want the convention center to charge this amount to us, for us to use the convention center. ¿Y saben que la respuesta que me dio alguien me dio tristeza? Somebody gave me a respond, response that made me very sad. Y dijo que los, el Distrito Unificado de Los Ángeles no tiene que ver nada con la ciudad. He told us that the LA USD doesn't have anything to do with the city. Por eso no nos podían ayudar. And that's why they couldn't help us. Yo me pregunto entonces. I asked myself. ¿Quién los puso ustedes en esos puestos? Who placed you in these positions? ¿No fueron los padres de esos estudiantes que van al Distrito Unificado de Los Ángeles? Were in the parents of these students that go to the LA USD, the ones that did it. Pues están equivocados, sí son. You are mistaking that these parents are the ones. El Distrito Unificado de Los Ángeles está dividido en ocho distritos. The unified school district is divided in eight districts. Ocho distritos, ¿qué es la responsabilidad de ustedes? Eight districts, and these districts are under your responsibility. Y ayudar a las personas que vivimos en esa. You are supposed to help the people that live in those areas. Cuando hay personas que quieren lavarse las manos diciendo que no somos responsabilidad de ustedes. When there is people that wants to wash their hands indicating that we are not your responsibility. Me da esta vergüenza. I feel ashamed. Vergüenza que decirnos no sea lavarse las manos. I feel ashamed when they say no, because this is washing their hands. Saber que aprobaron un waiver para que se hicieran los Grammys de cuando aprobaron veinticinco mil dólares y ahora son dieciocho mil y no lo quieren hacer. We know that you approved a waiver for the Grammys, and you approved twenty-five thousand dollars, and now it's eighteen thousand, and you don't want to do it. Por favor, consideren que nosotros esperamos más de tres mil padres en ese evento. Please take in consideration that we are waiting for more than three thousand. Padres que no van a pagar nada por asistir a veintiocho talleres que tenemos. Parents that are not going to pay anything to go to twenty-eight trainings, workshops. Tenemos cuidado de niños. We have childcare. ¿En dónde se ve eso? Where do you see that? En ningún lado. You don't see that anyplace. Desayuno y almuerzo para los padres. We are providing breakfast and lunch for the parents. Sin ningún costo alguno. Without any cost. ¿Y qué les estamos enseñando a los padres en esa conferencia? And what are we teaching the parents on that conference? Que sus hijos no busquen la calle. That their children don't go to the streets. Que sepan que hay avenidas para llegar a la universidad. For them to find that there are resources for the children to go to the university. Que los padres entiendan que cuando una escuela le cierra la puerta.
Okay, she's gonna have to conclude.
For the parents to understand that when the school closes the door. Nosotros le damos la clave para que se abra. Muchas gracias. Espero que esta vez si me escuche. We give them the key for them to open the door.
Thank you. Ruth Batista?
One more, one more minute.
Yeah, we give extra time for those who need translation. Thank you. We got two.
Buenos dias, señores.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Mi venida aquí es por algo que en realidad tenemos por derecho.
The reason that I'm coming here is because of something that we have as a right.
La Constitución de este país.
The Constitution of this country.
Dice que la educación es gratuita.
Indicates that the education is free.
Tenemos a varios de los, de las personas que están aquí.
Some of the people that are here.
Señor Cárdenas.
Mr. Cárdenas.
Egresado de la, de la high school de Van Nuys.
He graduated from Van Nuys High School.
Pero se le, se le está olvidando a usted que también fue un egresado de nuestras escuelas públicas.
You're forgetting that you also graduated from one of our public schools.
Y yo insto a todas las personas.
I have seen.
That aquí.
All of you here.
Que por favor, se nos haga ese, esa exoneração, el pago.
I am asking you to please give us a waiver for the payment.
Del convention center.
For the convention center.
Ya que esto es educación para nuestros padres.
This is education for our parents.
Educación para nuestros hijos.
Education for our children.
¿Y qué les cuesta a ustedes?
What is it costing you?
Darlos un pedacito.
Yes, to give us a little piece.
De lo que la ciudad tiene.
Of what the city has.
Yo les llamo encarecidamente, que reconsideren todo esto.
I'm begging you to please reconsider.
Para que nosotros no nos quedemos sin ese evento que se da en forma gratuita a más de tres mil y hasta cinco mil padres.
I am asking you to please reconsider for us to be able to have this event that is offered to three or four thousand parents.
Una vez más, por favor.
Once more.
Yo insto a su buen corazón.
I'm asking of you.
A que se nos exonere de ese pago.
I'm asking your good heart to please waive this expense.
Y de paso, les invitamos para que vean cómo es nuestro evento.
We are also inviting you.
Muchas gracias.
To come and see how we do this event.
Thank you. Alasia, Alasia, Alicia Batista. Mr. Cárdenas?
Mr. President, also the city attorney, I know this is not agendized, but I'd just like to remind the public, especially the people watching, that we have done an analysis of many of the in-kind services to the community that normally would befall directly on the school district, and it's in the tens of millions of dollars a year that the city of Los Angeles supplements for those purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Cárdenas. Go ahead, ma'am. Ms. Batista?
Okay, good morning. I understand what you say before, but the point of that is because, like you, like a council member, like a public, like a parents, like a professional, everybody got a right and responsibility to change the community, and community is every corner that you live. And how can we do when we know, like right now, we got a problem with the budget, and we cut a lot of professional, we need in a school, we need in a district, we need in every places? You know what? Who cover these places? And professional work with all love and respect, parents like us. We are volunteer for fifteen, twenty years for LA USD. And like when you come right here, very serious, we take very serious the leadership for representative parents. And I know the difference, because I'm from Guatemala, and I'm so proud to come to this country and learn English, for I can defend myself, for I can talk about my right, and teach the parents to their responsibilities. I know you're so busy, and I know you have to get a different decision, but when we come today, it's because we have to thinking whatever we do for improve the parents to understand they have to be a better parents, and they got a responsibility to this country, we're gonna change the problem we have right now. The kids don't finish the high school, the gang member we have in the street right now. Why? Because the parents don't know how handle the kid when they are teenager. And we have to be, and we are trying to be the part, the part to the difference. And we have to be, and we are trying to be the part, the, the part to the difference, to be to the good sides, to help these parents and communities to take their responsibilities. Now we just have to wait for you to take decision, like a community, like a taxes member, because we pay taxes too. We have to understand, everybody have to be safe in the street, and how can we do that when we got a lot of student after the school with a program we can got at the proximal criminal for the 10,000, 10,011? We have to think about it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support for parents, parents at your conference. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair, and I just wanted to make a comment generally, and I want to thank the ladies from coming down day after day, and their cause is good and their cause is just, the policy has changed on fee waivers. My assistant Stephanie Magnan is in the back there going over it now, uh, and I, I would be more than happy to work with them to go back to the Los Angeles Unified School District and ask the Los Angeles Unified School District to help them identify the money that is needed to pay for this event. I have been to the parents summits, and they are really important events, they are significant, and they do do a lot of good work. We, as a city, have unfortunately changed our policy, so I'm happy to stand with them and speak to Supervisor Cortinas on their behalf to see if LAUSD can come up with the money to be able to help them, but I also want to be honest with them and tell them that our policy has changed, and we don't do fee waivers, uh, of that nature anymore, and they've enjoyed many good years when we did do the fee waivers, and they had a great turnout all the time, the parents really turn out for these events, so I will call the supervisor today, and maybe if he's listening, they have, well, they have Channel 36, I think, uh, but I'll call him today, and I will talk to him and say, "Look, can you please help them find the money so that we can do this, and, uh, see what we can do to help?" But as far as our policy is concerned, our council did vote on the policy, and the policy has been adopted, and so, you know, I, I just don't want you to think we're ignoring your concerns, we're following our own policy that we voted on because we are in a deep budgetary crisis, and, and thank you for coming out and advocating.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. That concludes our items in the public comment. Madam Clerk?
Uh, there's nothing else on the desk before council.
All righty, so, we have a desk that's clear, are there any announcements from any members? Any adjourning motions?
March 20th.
We're gonna announce that at the end, Mr. Labange, when we conclude.
I got that, but I wanted to ask that for the clerk, Mr. President. On the 17th of March, the 10th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade will take place between El Pueblo Monument, Alvera Street, and Pershing Square, the public is invited to come and enjoy St. Patrick's Day for that, and we're gonna honor Captain Richard Andrade, the great captain from Engine 3, who started this parade 10 years ago, and also started Hope for Firefighters, uh, St. Patrick's Day next Tuesday, the 17th, 11:30 AM.
Any other announcements? Adjourning motions, anyone for adjourning motions? No adjourning motions? No adjourning motions? This concludes the meeting. City Clerk, please call the roll, our next meeting will be Friday, the 20th of March, Friday, 20th.